I'll speak to no one at all. Welcome, everyone, to the Wednesday, April 19th, 2023 formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. For purposes of minutes, I'll note who is in attendance for the commissioners. There's Craig, Padron, Elliott, Wade, Townsend, and Hench. Next item on the agenda is public discussion of any item not on the agenda. Since there is no public present, we can pass over that agenda item. And so we'll come to number four, presentation and discussion on the city council strategic plan. And our city councillor here, Mr. Thomas, the floor is yours.
Well, thank you for arranging this. I last week went to a historic preservation meeting and we discussed it there as well. And one thing that Historic Preservation did prior to the meeting was they developed a work plan in response to the strategic plan, which I was a little bit surprised by, but I was impressed by that, you know, that they've actually looked at it critically and developed a response in terms of where they feel they need to, you know, what they need to look into with respect to, you know, their mission as it is reflected in the comprehensive, I mean, in the strategic plan. So I don't know if you would want to consider that, but I did think it was kind of an interesting response. Maybe something may come out of the meeting tonight or our conversations that might lead to that. You know, we were just last night, they, you know, had a consultation and then our meeting. And, you know, I don't know if you watched our discussion. I wasn't so much concerned, and I guess we're, do we have more readings on that? We do. My concern was the process, not so much the zoning, that it was not, there were no conditions on the rezoning. And insofar as it's commercial intensive, which is a fairly intense land use, the only other category, as I think, maybe even more intense, would be industrial, that oftentimes in a intense commercial zone, you will have, you will pay special attention, as our code calls for, to address whatever negative impacts may come from the use that takes place on those properties that are zoned commercial intensive. And insofar as we didn't know what the use was, it made it difficult to, how do you respond to the impacts? We don't know what the impacts will be. And I mentioned that, you know, unlike you, Mike, I've been around City Hall a while in terms of planning and zoning.
And just because, I don't know that all the commissioners know that, but John is a former P&amp;Z commissioner, so he has more knowledge of P&amp;Z than I think probably any other city councillor. So when he speaks, I always listen because he's been in the trenches of it.
It is, I think it's a great prerequisite if anyone has interest in serving on city council. I think it's really valuable to have at least some background. I was, maybe that's a, maybe that's a work action item, is developing a short course for city council members that, so they have some idea, what is, how do we govern land use, you know, in terms of the comprehensive plan? What's its relationship to the zoning code? What are the zoning codes? What are these district plans that we have? And, you know, what actually is the comprehensive plan? It's encompassed in a whole range of different documents, so it's kind of hard to keep track of exactly what the comprehensive plan is. It's not one volume, it's multiple volumes that are continually changing, so it's kind of hard to keep track of it. But anyway, yeah, I spent three and a half years on P&amp;Z and the, while I was there, the billion auto dealership came before P&amp;Z. So it, that particular property did go through a planning and zoning review, there was a specific plan for that property, and there were conditions on the rezoning. And I think that was, I would say, I don't know if it was always applied in that general area, but I think most of the properties developed went through P&amp;Z and city council. So as you know, last night, without any conditions, the, with the approval, it's handled administratively. So there isn't, that's it, you know, we're done. So that is one issue for me that I'm concerned with, that there, when do we do that? When do we say we can, we'll just simply rezone? How is that decision made without going through, you know, requiring an application along with the rezoning for a particular project?
But if you look at why that property was rezoned and then we rezoned it back, zoned it back to what it was, it was rezoned in the hopes of attracting development, and it didn't work. I mean, but it was, that's why it was rezoned that time.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that that's absolutely a good reason to, you know, in the right part, it was in the right part of town, it was, this is the kind of development that people felt was ready to happen, it just didn't happen.
Yeah.
Didn't happen there. So I don't, I mean, I think you can absolutely rezone without having a exact, I mean, it's happened to us many times now.
And I think, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that is our job. We only review the code, but we shouldn't have to review every project specifically because then, once the land is rezoned, or whatever is the zone that it already has, you know, you can build whatever the code says. So I don't think it would be, but just correct me if I'm wrong, or like if anybody disagrees, I don't think we should be reviewing each project one by one. Does it make sense?
Well, I think it, in my experience, you know, I could cite examples, the first one that comes to my mind was the first one I ever encountered, and it was before I was on planning and zoning. I was the North Side Neighborhood Coordinator, and there was a project proposed at the corner of Lynn and Bloomington, and had a project associated with the rezoning. And the council at that time denied the project, but approved the rezoning, a portion of the rezoning. It was, the rezoning would have covered three lots, and what they agreed to were the two lots facing Lynn Street. The third lot would have wrapped around the corner onto Bloomington. So they voted down the project, approved the rezoning, and that then came back as another project, which is the one you have, which is the one that was built there now. So what I found useful about having the project was it gave me a sense that, you know, not all projects are the same in terms of how they meet the zoning code and the comprehensive plan. So it can be helpful to see how the zone is being interpreted by the project with respect to meeting the language of the comprehensive plan. But anyway, I don't want to get too, we're not talking, well, we're talking strategic plan, I guess, in a sense, in that it gets into issues of public engagement, which I think kind of pertains to what we're talking about. You know, how do we, how do we define and select our processes on these projects that go through the P&amp;Z so that the public has confidence in our decision making? And when we have controversial projects, how do we want to address them in terms of ensuring that we don't end up in situations where the community feels that there's been a lack of transparency, or, you know, that they weren't heard, those sorts of things? I've always felt, I was kind of drawn into Iowa City politics because I felt some of the decisions made on the land use, on land use matters were not optimizing the projects in terms of win-win. It seemed like there were people who were winning and there were people who felt they were losing. And I, my feeling was, can we strive to try to, you know, develop projects where that there, we don't result, the result doesn't end in that way? And I know I've been involved in personal projects where I felt we, we did a, we made an effort to try to ensure that that happened. Because we are one community, you know, this is not a game where there are winners and losers, we're one community. And I've just met too many people who felt burned out, you know, by the tensions and struggles that they encountered while engaging in city politics. I mean, you lost a commissioner just recently, and I was, you know, that, I, you know, I listened to your discussion of, you know, when Mark came for his last meeting, it was a very emotional response on your part, which I totally was sympathetic to. I think Mark's experience and his sensibilities were really valuable to P&amp;Z. So anyway, I mean, there's just, how can we try to get work through this process, you know, in the strategic plan to, you know, promote this idea that we are one community? Because I do feel we are in difficult times, and those difficult times will continue with respect to, you know, what some people call the polycrisis. You know, one of the issues here in terms of values is the Climate Action Plan. We are facing.
Jump around.
Oh, yeah.
Let's jump around.
I tend to view it as the climate action, the climate, issues related to climate are, in one, in one respect, the, another symptom of what some people have called the fact that we have exceeded the carrying capacity of the planet, which has resulted in what is referred to as overshoot. And one of the consequences of that overshoot, exceeding the carrying capacity of the planet, is climate change. But there are other impacts as well. You know, in Iowa, we have soil erosion, we have, you know, flooding, you know, the nitrates in our water quality, a lot of things associated with our industrial agriculture are part of the exceeding the carrying capacity of the land in Iowa. So there are a number of, it's, some people refer to as the polycrisis, you know, we're just dealing with multiple issues. And faced with all those issues, one of my greatest concerns with respect to climate action and all the other impacts is, do we hold, do we hold ourselves together as a community? Or do we end up under the stresses and strains of that, you know, experiencing trauma on a personal level, or perhaps on a social level? So I'm looking and trying to find ways, and faced with the, these challenges and difficulties we'll have, how can we, through our public processes and building social capital on our own, prepare ourselves for the times ahead? Because I think, you know, they, they're already challenging, and they're going to continue to be challenging. We do have the slides, I don't, do we, we could just sort of go through them, and if there's anything that prompts points or comments you'd like to make, yeah, we can go to the next slide, I think. So here, here's an example of what I was just talking about, all the various challenges. And we could come up with more bullet points if we wanted to. It's, it's a long list of things. I, you know, we live in a time of extraordinary uncertainty. And so the degree we can try to allow ourselves some comfort in a time of uncertainty, I think that will, that would be beneficial. So we spent a long time on this, we started it in March, and I don't think we completed until the end of last year, working with EC Cog. And, you know, it was also incorporated the, some of the points of view of Think Iowa City, and ICAD, and, you know, some of the other local entities that are involved in various issues attached to Iowa City. And then again, the values.
Should I keep going?
Yeah, sure. All of them, obviously, very, very important. I've been, you know, mentioning some of the things regarding partnership engagement. And that notion of engagement, to me, is a multifaceted one. I'm very interested in seeing if we can't promote governance at a more local level within our neighborhoods and more localized communities. I like, I like that kind of in-person, face-to-face conversation you can have at that scale. And so trying to promote ways in which, you know, you can become acquainted with your neighbors in smaller groups. I think, I've since learned, too, that as a species homo sapiens, most of our existence as a species were in small groups. You know, it's only been arguably, you know, in the last 400 years that we've, of our existence as a species, that we've moved beyond small groups. So we're, it's kind of in our genetic code to function at that level. And I've found that that, you know, I certainly feel very comfortable in my neighborhood as a way of experiencing the world, getting to know my neighbors. And that all entails ways in which you can encounter people. That's something, my background is in landscape architecture, so I'm, and I design public spaces, so I've always been fascinated with, how do we create the space in which people can encounter one another? And it can be at different scales, you know, it can be just on a block, where you run into your neighbor on the sidewalk, or it could be in a neighborhood park, it could be the celebration over women's basketball in front of Old Capitol. Ideally, you have a whole nest of different spaces in which we can relate to one another as one community, or in the smaller neighborhood. All of those, I think, are really important in building connections with others. And that's what, you know, I think COVID, for me, really brought home, you know, how isolated we can be, and depending on our circumstances. And those opportunities during COVID, when we were all sheltering in place, I think revealed, you know, how some neighborhoods are rich in ways one can relate to others within, you know, a five-minute walk of their, their home. Other neighborhoods, maybe not so much. And so, as, I think, as we all are, and COVID revealed a lot of the inequities running through our community. And I would say one of them is just access to social spaces is not equally distributed. And I guess we can go on to the next slide. So I think there's really great language in the strategic plan. I think one of the challenges is really, you know, bringing it in in a, in a very compelling way into our own thinking, because I know how, you know, we can, we can read through these, this language and, you know, kind of nod our head in agreement with it, but to actually have it inform our behavior and our decision-making can be challenging, I've found. Again, personally, the, the item there, the biodiverse environment found throughout our community, I think one of, one of, again, the challenges we face in an urbanized setting in a state, which has been probably transformed more than any other state in the country in terms of its land that makes up Iowa. Creating biodiverse environments is a challenge. Many people would say, and I think it's especially true in Iowa, that the, with the loss of habitat, that one opportunity you have in cities is ensuring that we have habitat within the urban areas. So our natural areas, our garden, our personal gardens, our parks, all of those can contribute to creating habitat. Because we're short on natural area outside the city.
Interestingly, that's one area that's not addressed very well in our Conference of Plan about trying to rewild or provide habitat, you know, because Iowa's really a monoculture state, and to get, you know, just be intentional about creating pollinator habitat, and brown bat habitat, and those sort of things, that are more friendly to an urban environment.
Yeah, exactly. In fact, you know, I've had many conversations with Backyard Abundance, and those who are, you know, interested in, in community gardening and things of that sort. And they agree, and I agree with their point of view, and have done it in my own yard, you know, where I initially, when I moved here, I was planting row crop, not row crops, but, you know, annual vegetables. And I realized, maybe I don't need to do that, maybe what I should be doing in my yard is creating habitat for pollinators and natural, natural habitat for native plants and, and critters. Maybe it's more valuable that way. I can always go to the farmer's market, and, you know, the market, our supermarkets, they have excellent produce. And it's kind of hard growing things from seed every single year, you know? And you have to break the ground, and, you know, fight the weeds. Iowa is just, it's like multiple waves of weeds through the growing season. So in a sense, I found it easier just to plant perennials and enjoy being around all the birds and insects and the flowers and so forth. What Iowa does have, although it lost probably over 99% of it, was, I think, one of the most beautiful plant communities in the world, the prairie. It's just an extraordinary plant community. You know, the, between the grasses and the, and the forbs, as they're referred to, when I learned about that in California, and I saw profiles of how deep the roots in these plants go, which is why Iowa has its soils, I was just astonished. You know, you don't have topsoil in Iowa, you know, it goes, it's too deep. So, you know, reverting to prairie has just been a revelation for me at a backyard level. And it is something I've been trying to promote. We did some planting in North Market Square, if you're familiar with that, there are perennial beds. It's not all lawn, we did take out some of it. So that, I think that's an interesting thing to do locally, and it can be, you know, in terms of building relationships with your neighbors. I think it's a, that's an interesting way to go, is community gardening, maybe it's not edibles, maybe it's, or maybe it's a combination of edibles and native plants. So this is the one we were talking about, some of these comments, you know, how do we, I want, I really, my goal is that when people come to City Hall, at least they don't, they're not, you know, how can we minimize the sense that they just feel left out, angry with the outcome? Because I'm just concerned that when that happens, we may lose people, you know, because they just feel that the process isn't worth their time. Life is, as I was saying, it's difficult enough. And, you know, in my, in my background, designing public spaces, what I, what I found interesting about it was, we sometimes refer to it as, working on the design of a neighborhood park could be kind of a gateway drug to deeper civic involvement. Because you have a engagement on that project, you feel better about it, you feel like you had a role to play, and it's kind of like walking in the shallow end, and then, okay, maybe I'll take on some of the more challenging issues we have as a community. We've had some success on this, let's, let's build on it. So that's what I'm hoping to see more of, that people have a sense of confidence and interest in city affairs, whatever they may be. You know, there's no question, land use is one of the more challenging issues. But to the extent we can try to find common ground, that's, that's something that I'm always trying to strive for. So that's the, one of the questions is how, you know, and I think we've, you know, Mark, I personally would like to talk to Mark more, more detailed to understand what, you know, what, were there any particular things that caused him to resign? What were the stress points? But in terms of those values, you know, I was noting personally, you know, that there was that issue of the, I think some, I think you might have referred to it, Mike, as the bait and switch on the project north of the tracks.
Myrtle and Riverside.
Yeah. I mean, that was, that was again because we, we didn't tie the original project to the rezoning. It was, you know, not a condition of that rezoning, and so it was possible to go in a different direction without having to come back.
But they still, you know, they still were in the comprehensive plan, it was still zoned correctly, they didn't do anything outside of what that area allows.
Uh-huh.
And if the project isn't financially feasible, or becomes, you know, you can have a dream, but when the banker says, that's not going to work for your bottom line.
Yeah.
You have to change.
And that's.
And I think that's, I think that's what happened in this instance. And so we're very disappointed about that.
Yeah.
It's almost better not to have known.
The point is, they could just come back under a new application. I'm not suggesting that the project ends, it just means that reapply with a new project. That's, that's all I, I would say would be the, the way in which we could avoid that sense of feeling, we were promised something and that's not what we got, that rather than that feeling, the feeling of, okay, they realized financially it didn't pan out, they're going to apply with a new project.
If I could speak to this a little bit, because I think this conversation is interesting, and it's something we've talked about with the commission before, I mean, part of the reason that we have the Riverfront Crossings master plan and the form-based code is to make that process easy for developers. And we, we adopted a vision and made it clear that we want this property zoned Riverfront Crossings West, that's what it says in the plan. We adopted specific form-based regulations for how we want those projects to be developed. And like Susan said, and Maggie said, that was the vision, and they're staying true to that, even though the project changed.
Right. My observation is that, because we've done a number of projects through the form-based code for Riverfront Crossings, some large, some small. What's some of my favorites, and where I think, at least from my perspective, there is, you know, because the idea with the form-based code is predictability, you know, we're just, don't pay attention to the use, pay attention to the form. The, the form of a couple of projects in the, and it's, it's also in a transition zone, the Near East side, near where Blancone McCune is, across the street from Blancone McCune on College, that's a form-based code project. And it's a relatively small site, it's, you know, 125 feet deep and maybe 80 feet wide. And it's two buildings, it's townhouses along Van Buren, and then on to the east of that is a apartment building. Where I think things can be less predictable is when the sites are larger. As they get larger, then, you know, the, the way the code is written, there can be outcomes, very, extremely different outcomes, that, you know, don't have the predictability that you can have with a smaller site. So that's, that's something that I've seen, is that the projects can change dramatically, even though both arguably comply with the code, that you, you shouldn't expect that they will have similarities, there could be considerable differences. That's, that's, you know, my concern is, you know, and those differences could play out in terms of what the goals of the comprehensive. of what the goals of the comprehensive plan are. So that, that's again, just my observation. The, the projects, at least in terms of my expectation with the form-based code, have been more successful when they are more, more or less the size of the projects that were identified in the Riverfront Crossings master plan itself. And, and so, you know, that, that's my observation after years of seeing the code play out, is the bigger the project, or the bigger the site, and in many cases, these have been consolidated lots. That's, you know, you have, you know, the, the Gilbane project is a full block. The master plan called for four developments on that block. It's one development now. And then, you know, the one that was added, you know, where we added on the, on the other side of the river, west of Riverside Drive, the project north of the tracks, I don't, that was multiple lots, I'm not sure how many that was, but it was, it's a big, big site. I think it's over three and a half acres, something like that. So there's, there's going to be more variability and less predictability, the larger the lot size. Which again, I, I'm not saying our code allows for that consolidation. The question is, should we acknowledge that the predictability from project to proj, you know, it's, you can, you can create many different projects on a large site. And so the predictability diminishes the larger the site. Should that, should, should we reconsider our review process when you're talking about a, a project that's over, you know, some size, half an acre, an acre, I don't know. That's a different, a different project with potentially a different impact.
But I, I just have a comment. But then what would happen if someone wants to build a project in a, in a plot that is already on the zone that it's supposed to be? Then it doesn't even come to us.
If it's, I'm sorry, I missed the.
So let's say I want to put a building in a, in a site where it's already the correct code zone, right? Then it won't even come to the planning and zoning, so nobody has to review it, right? And they can just build whatever they want. So then, how, how is that fair that, because someone wants to build something in, in a, you know, in a site that has been, that has a temporary code that will change eventually, and then they have to come to us and we can tell them like, no, this is like, you know, you're in the right zone, but I don't like this building. And then another person can build whatever they want because the site is already on the right sound code. Am I?
I just want to take this opportunity to, to make sure the conversation is directed to the strategic plan tonight during this time.
Right. Well, yeah, I guess we were, what could we do to carry out these values in terms of what we've seen on the previous slide?
Well, I think the biggest way that we carry out the values is through the public input process. And, you know, we had a really good conversation recently about, you know, we changed our bylaws to, to be a little more regimented in how that public input process happens. And the tension between trying to make that fair for everybody and at the same time acknowledge the level that some people bring to the conversation that is very, very important to them. And it was a good conversation and I think went along with what, you know, the strategic plan is trying to get at in being an inclusive government and listening to all voices. And I think that we do a very good job of that.
Yeah. And I think another example is just a reminder, because it's easy to forget things you've done, like we increased the distance that we send out public notices for rezonings and other activities. We put an increased emphasis on good neighbor meetings.
Right.
And then we, I don't think we've ever cut off public input. We've gone way late. So everybody has a chance to speak is, you know, and so I think we do a pretty good job of that, but we can always do better.
And I, and I, I'm sorry. I think that when we vote, one way or another, between all of us, right, we give very good reasons overall. And then our chair always explains more and more. So we never say like, no, and then that's it. And I think that's one way.
Yeah. It's hard to see people not going away feeling like they've been heard when development is coming into their area that they don't want. I mean, I feel like they always go away mad. And, and that's, you know, just the way it is.
I think that's just a, a human factor, because it is frustrating on both our sides. If people provide their input and then the vote goes contrary to what their input was.
Right.
And so they feel like they weren't heard. Well, what they're doing is providing, they're informing our decision-making and that's been accomplished. So they may have not got the output that they wanted, but their input was respected and heard.
Yeah. Sometimes we make conditions based on, on what they've said.
And of course, if we're fair with everyone that comes through here in the same way, if we're using the same rules for everybody, then how can you complain? I mean, you may not be happy with it, but we followed the codes, we followed the zones, we've done what we were supposed to do, we've done our job, we've listened to what you have to say. And what you have to say is not against the rules. So as long as we're not saying, oh, because you're rich, we'll let you do this. And because you're poor, you can't do this. We don't do that. So I think as long as we stay within those lines and when we, like you said, when we see something that's a little different, then we try to change it so that the input is better, like giving them more time or listening to any, whoever wants to talk, it's their chance. I think that's what.
Yeah. I've, I've watched many of your meetings and I, I'm pleased with, with the, the way in you, the way in which you engage with speakers from the public. Works very well.
I mean, we have to give a lot to our leaders too. I mean, I think he does a great job of keeping things under control and letting people know that, okay, that's not what, that's not, that's not that part of the meeting. Or, you know, you have to wait your turn.
I'm sure we have the same feeling that city councilors do when they hear negative feedback. They'll say, like, I wrote your letter, I spoke to you, I came to meetings and you still voted adversely to it. Well, you giving your opinion, even if you get 100 people to say it, doesn't mean you're going to get your perspective followed. It's always that whole thing of you're informing our decision-making, you're not making our decision for us. And it's, it's hard. I don't know there's an easy answer to that.
Is this a time, as we're talking about strategic planning, I think of the things that we talk about that are frustrating is some of that, I don't know if, I mean, I don't know how to go about this, but when I think of biodiversity, we've talked about, can we make that part of, somehow part of the process that, that we look at the biodiversity of the area? And is that being maintained or can it be improved? We talk about, what are those swales that, you know, that are in?
Swales?
That are in, and then the, and then the, the homeowners have to take care of it and they never take care of it.
Oh, the detention ponds?
Yeah. I mean, are the, is this a time where strategic planning?
Or wooden slopes that are part of a development.
That we look at, is there something that we can do to bring forward to the city council?
Well, actually, what John brought up about the historic preservation commission is probably a good idea, that we can look, maybe have a, a session where we, one of our agenda items is discussing the city's strategic plan and then how we can respond to that. If there's some suggestions we can make to the council or to ourselves about how to incorporate that.
Yeah. I think that, I, I view this as an opportunity to provide feedback on, on your own processes and decision-making. I know that I'm, you know, like with respect to some of the projects, you know, over the years, not just the ones you perhaps have voted on, but just the general condition in Iowa City that, of the urban condition which resulted from prior decisions that were made with respect to land use. And evaluate which ones seem to be, were successful and which ones, you know, perhaps less so. And be particularly observant about your own decision-making, you know, what your expectation was and, and a understanding of, of the process and the project. And then observing it, once it's constructed, to see, is it, is it in fact of benefit to the, you know, to the community, to the public life of this community? Is it in a sense consistent with the comprehensive plan, as you noted, Mike, is kind of your charge? I, I think that's an interesting thing to do over time. Because, you know, when I, I first moved here in 2010, or late 2009, and I hadn't read a comprehensive plan before. I had worked in, in land use-related issues, public lands, but I hadn't read a comprehensive plan. And I found it interesting because in all instances, you know, that with the zones, it talks about compatibility with the neighborhood. And I've gone through neighborhoods and I thought, how, how is this project compatible with the neighborhood? So I mean, it's that, you know, and in some cases, a project that was approved by some prior planning and zoning commission and city council, as consistent with the comp plan and so on and so forth, is now rezoned redevelopment. Because it's an acknowledged failure. The area that I'm aware of in this regard is south of Burlington, you know, the multifamily developments on Johnson and Van Buren in that area. It's, it's a redevelopment area because of lack of usable open space and crowding. So how does that, how could that inform your job right now? You know, in terms of usable open space, the way the buildings are configured and so forth? What makes for a successful project as it translates to planning and zoning?
Well, again, I feel like we're following what's in the comp plan. We, I don't feel like I make, can make a decision, or I won't make a decision, that's, I feel is outside of what's in the comp plan for that zone. So.
Maybe the next item on here is action steps. Do you want to maybe talk about some of the action steps that would end up coming before P and Z?
Sure, yeah. What?
I don't know what slide.
Did we cover the action steps?
That was next. This is supposed to be on impact areas and action steps.
I don't know if it gets down to the action steps in this PowerPoint.
Well, strategy number one is updating the comprehensive planning and zoning code to encourage compact and diverse housing types and land uses. So that's something that the strategic plan calls out that will definitely be coming back to this commission.
And we've discussed low-income housing many times on this commission. And I've learned a lot about, you know, through information supplied by the staff, I've learned a lot amount about how it doesn't, doesn't work well. And, you know, it, that's a struggle. It's, it's a real struggle everywhere. And, and in Iowa City where housing is very expensive, it's, it's more of a struggle than some places.
Yeah. And then, and.
And Ben and Iowa probably doesn't worry about what the rent is.
Sure don't. But then if you look at item number five on the residential development analysis, that's next, that's not encouraging. When you read that, I mean.
Right.
Prices are going to go up if everything stays status quo.
Right, right.
It presents a little bit of a challenge and I appreciate you joining. But when we talk about creating more green space and more area to make it a friendlier neighborhood, then that decreases the density. So in, in a goal of achieving both affordable housing and surplus of housing, then it becomes conflicting when we want to try to increase the green space and such. So it's trying to find that balance in both, which sometimes becomes a little bit subjective. And I think overall, we try to do a good job with it, but you know, it's a continuous improvement. But releasing density within the Van Buren-Johnson Street area, that density has to go somewhere, people have to go somewhere. So where consumes that density and also remaining the walkability of being close to downtown and so on, you know, finding that, that area. So either it has to build up or it has to build out.
Yeah. It is a challenge. It's, you know, trying to increase density, not, not the best word in my opinion in terms of, while at the same time, and this is what, you know, the redevelopment, and if you walk through that area, you know, that how, how can density be developed in a manner which provides open space? You know, as you were saying, it, it could be, you know, I think the, the intent there, my observation would be that the, the, the apartment buildings were attempting to, to be of a scale that would be compatible with the neighborhood. But when you increase density to an RM44 level without going to say a four-story building height in order to achieve that, between the parking, the parking requirements and the, the unit densities, there, there was nothing left. So something has, the equation has to be reconsidered.
And yet, if you go to a real, a real urban area, there is nothing left. And so you need to capture your public spaces to serve a very highly dense, I mean, I spend a fair amount of time in Brooklyn, New York, where my son lives. And it is, it is, it was a revelation to the Iowa girl to see.
Yeah.
How the public space, nobody has, I mean, most people don't even have any kind of yard at all. They don't have a place to park a car. They don't have, they have nothing. And, and, and the houses that do have yards have very small yards.
Yeah.
And, but the public spaces make up for it.
Exactly.
Because they're everywhere. And, you know, they're fairly well-maintained. Everyone is in them. I mean, there is no, there is no rich, poor, whatever, though that's where this kind of person goes, whatever. They're all in the public spaces because the building density drives them into the public space to be outside, which is not a bad thing.
I think of the peninsula where, you know, there's very small, I mean, the, the housing is very close together. And then you have a park, the public park.
Yeah. You have, you have, are you talking about the dog park?
No, I'm talking about the park. I don't know the name of it.
The little, small park, yeah. As I said earlier, there, it's nice to have open spaces of different si, of different sizes. So you have the dog park, then you have the, the little central park, which is not very large. It's only, I think, about 13,000 square feet. But it's, it's, it's like a little pocket park that, as you were saying, Susan, is easily accessible to the residents of the peninsula. And what happened in the south of Burlington, or south of Burlington area was higher densities without, okay, if we're going to go from single-family residential to RM44, that's going to, when you consider the parking requirement and the whole lot is going to be developed, maybe we need to acquire some of these properties that, you know, where there were houses and consolidate a couple of those and create a pocket park of some sort. Something to, if there isn't an existing park nearby, and perhaps if there were, acknowledge that you're going to have more users than you did in the past. Because with single-family homes, you have sizable open space behind every house. All of those.
Right. And the form-based code is, has addressed that in some degree.
Right. So, so with form-based code comes the, and higher densities comes the necessity to make sure that there's easily accessible open space in conjunction with that.
Right.
And so, you know, when you look at the comprehensive plan, follow the plan in terms of not only the development, but the open space opportunities that the plan includes as well. as well. That, I, you know, it's, if you look at Roarit, Riverfront Crossings, South District, they all, which, which I particularly like, the latter two, Roarit and, and South District, there's, there's a complete full acknowledgement of, this is development, and it's development that's also acknowledged the need for well distributed open space. That was a new concept, you know, the idea that you, when you, when you zone an area of that size, be sure to include a network of open spaces within the development area. There are some neighborhoods in Iowa City that don't have access to a neighborhood park. That's something that I identified in the Park's master plan. So that, I mean, and, you know, like, one example being the Lucas Farm neighborhood. There, there is, well, there's Highland Park.
I was going to say, there's a little pocket park there, right.
That's, that's a mini park. It would be nice to have a central gathering space, and that's in the strategic plan, you know, if you look under neighborhoods and housing, at least one place serving as a center. That was a new concept introduced in the strategic plan.
So how are you addressing this permanent affordable housing? And what exactly is that permanent affordable housing?
I mean, that is the, you know, the $64,000 question, but.
Way more than that. I love the fact that it's there, but since I've been on the commission, this is a term that keeps coming out, and those places are not affordable for people that need it. So I think if we want to be fair, we need to address that issue because it's a, it's a problem. We've got a lot of poor folks in Iowa City.
Yeah.
That can't afford this affordable housing. And the, this, this whole division, subdivision that we just put up on Riverside tore down a lot of affordable housing, and you're putting up these high rises that are going to be expensive. And where are these folks supposed to go? I mean, is it, is it, it's not our place, but I think it's your place as city council to think about those people.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sharing you, sharing with you many of my thoughts, I don't know if I should continue to do that.
And my other one is Forest View.
Oh, Forest View, yeah, I know.
So don't get me, I'm trying to be very quiet. I'm waiting for you to address that piece.
Yeah.
And I'm not hearing anything about that piece, except it's.
That was, that was a tragedy.
Which one?
Well, Forest View. But yeah, the, the question of affordable housing, you know, some of the things that I would like to bring to council would be enabling our nonprofits, for example, the Housing Fellowship, to have in its portfolio market rate housing. So it'd be a blend of affordable and market rate with the idea that the rents from their market rate units combined with the rents from their affordable units would give their, their, and it, as them as an entity, more revenue stream, more of a revenue stream to provide affordable housing. And if you were to mix market with, with affordable in one building, you'd have kind of a diversity of occupants in that building, so you wouldn't be over concentrating, you know.
At this point, those are 10 to 20 year commitments.
This would be permanent. If, if, if the, if our nonprofits in the business, you know, whose mission is to create affordable housing, had a larger percentage of their portfolio market rate, that would provide them with the income to provide permanent affordable housing. It's, it's very difficult in a market where you have, you know, that is seeing increases in land values to provide affordable housing. So my, my, my strategy would be that the city and the nonprofits need to be more aggressive finding affordable properties to build, to build on. One of the challenges is, once you rezone, the land values go up. So it's almost better, I mean, if you look at the land values paid by some of our developers for some of the lands in Riverfront Crossings, it's astonishing what they're paying on a per square foot basis.
But they know they're going to get their money.
Well, it's, yeah, exactly.
They're not going to lose anything.
But that's why affordable housing is affordable, because they have to invest so many millions of dollars to build it that.
It seems to me that, that we could do something so that it's not so profitable for those builders coming in.
Well, I mean, one, one, another thought I'm just having, having seen what land is selling for in Riverfront Crossings is, and this, this would require a change, I don't even know if it's possible, but, you know, part of, if we do in lieu fees in Riverfront Crossings, we have to spend those in lieu fees in Riverfront Crossings. And the cost of land in Riverfront Crossings, from an affordable housing standpoint, is arguably prohibitive. It's very expensive.
Maybe that's what we need to address.
So, so the idea that maybe we can look at, looking at this language, that it has to be used in Riverfront Crossings, maybe there's a way of expanding the envelope, so to speak.
But then you have no affordable housing in Riverfront Crossings. I'm just saying, that's the conundrum that you have, is if you spend the money elsewhere where land is less expensive.
I would, I would look for proximity, of course. I would, I would want to try to find something as close to the source of the income as possible. But the land values in Riverfront Crossings are extremely high. So, you know, you, I just learned the other day, we, we have three and a half, $3.8 million in our bank account for affordable housing in Riverfront Crossings. But it's, it's extremely expensive to purchase land in Riverfront Crossings. You could easily absorb half of that with one land purchase.
And I don't think it has to be in Riverfront Crossing. I mean, how many of the areas that the, that the single family homes are built in are, have no affordable housing? I mean, so what are we saying here? It's okay for one group of people not to have affordable housing, but it's not okay for other groups?
I agree. I think if, I mean, it says in the strategic plan that it should be dispersed throughout the community, and, and I absolutely agree with that.
I, I agree with you, but I'm talking the real world.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I've heard it said sometimes, you know, we, we develop these documents, like the strategic plan and the comprehensive plan, and they're, they're inspiring and aspirational, and then reality hits that, you know, many, many parts of Iowa City are not designed in a manner, you know, in terms of their existing layout of the properties. It's very difficult to create opportunities for affordable housing. So there, there are limits, unfortunately, to how many neighborhoods would adapt to missing middle housing. It, it, it's not going to happen everywhere. So it's, I mean, that's just a built in challenge that we have. Where, where will it work?
I just want us not to stop saying all these beautiful words and start making some changes to make it happen.
Right.
So we know, we all, we all know we need affordable housing. I know that I would not like to see it all in one part of Iowa City. That's not what we want. But there are areas where it is conducive. It's, it's, the, the houses have been there, the apartments have been there, and now we're tearing them down because they're old. But we're replacing them with high rise apart units that are expensive. And those, those people that were in those, those spaces can no longer afford those spaces.
Right.
So let's, you know.
Well, we, we will be going as, you know, this is on, on the, the agenda for the coming year, looking citywide at code reform. You know, I, I would encourage you to, to look how, you know, other cities have attempted this. It might be useful, I found it useful looking at how other cities have, have approached this. It's a very challenging issue because so many, so many cities have dedicated so much of their land to single family housing that is not always accommodating in terms of trying to increase density. You know, Minneapolis, for example, they've, I think they've, they allow up to three units on a residential property in a single family zone, but not many property owners are taking advantage of it. So it looks great, I mean, wow, Minneapolis, you can now build three units where you only had one, but how, how many units are being created? It's, so it's, and I, you know, actually, there are parts of Iowa City that I think are well adapted to affordable housing. Any, any part of Iowa City that has alleyways is well adapted to creating more density.
Well, that whole Forest View area is just sitting there waiting.
I know, yeah.
Land is all clear.
So, yeah, I think.
But he owns it.
I'm just saying, it's not the city.
Does somebody own it?
Yeah.
But they're not building.
Well, but I mean, just saying, the land does not belong to the city.
Yeah, the, I think a lot of, you know, in terms of the strategic plan, the impact area of neighborhoods and housing is, I would, I would think is probably the most significant piece of this. Would you agree, Ann, or do you?
I suppose mobility too.
Uh huh.
Economy, I mean, I think all of these things.
They are all interrelated. Certainly mobility and land use, I mean, that is the other piece. If you're talking, and I've always, I've always argued on council that, you know, we tend to look at affordability in terms of just the housing, but it, I think it's better to look at it as both transportation and housing. Those are the two main expenses of a household. If you combine them, I think that the percentage that's typically used would be, it shouldn't exceed 45% of your household income. But what that means is if you live in a walkable part of Iowa City, you can spend more on your housing because your transportation costs are down.
Let's see, which other slides? We have resources, I don't know what else you'd like to go over.
I like your idea, Mike, of us having a session where we think of what we're.
I have one question, John, only because I'm kind of obsessed with the Iowa River. Currently, there's discussions going on to form a watershed management agency for the middle Iowa River, which would be the Iowa River down to the reservoir. And I think Iowa City is participating in that, even though none of the city limits are in that. But there's nothing going on about the lower Iowa River watershed, which is from the reservoir on down to the Mississippi. And that is probably the primary geologic feature of Iowa City, and I just don't understand why we're not paying more attention to the Iowa River. I mean, that's been the major source of problems in the past with the flooding. It's certainly a resource for, for tourism and recreation. Just seems like it's just a perpetually missed opportunity. You know, we've traded like Wilson Creek and, what's the creek right here?
Ralston.
Ralston, and Iowa River more like drainage ditches than anything else. And I just didn't see much mention in this, and I know this isn't the place for that, but it's something I will certainly bring up, that how, how can we not pay attention to the primary geological feature in Iowa City? And water quality, water quantity, boy, they're going to be, they're big now, and they're going to be bigger in the future. So, anyway, just wanted to bring that up just.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. It's, water quality in the state of Iowa is one of the most challenging issues the state faces.
And water quantity, you know, from the floods, you know, holding all that water back so we can slow down our floods, make the creeks retain water more in the streams and the different basins, so. I'm mostly just saying that to get everybody's thought processes sort of thinking about this, because I, I, I don't know if it's a whole lot we can do about that, but I just think it's pretty important for long term for Iowa City.
Well, in terms of flooding, you know, the use of detention basins, I think, is another interesting aspect of land use planning. You know, we, we just approved that project, Western Homes. I thought that was a, the use of the detention basin there was treated as a focal element in the development, not sort of just this, you know, these craters that's happen without any.
Which is almost what it always is, you know, you'll look at the presentations from the, the, the different planning firms, and then as an aside, they'll talk about the outlots, that the detention basins are on.
Yeah, I mean, they had an opportunity there to, you know, the, the low point on the property was not sort of in the, the lower east corner of the property or something, but, but they were able to incorporate that and actually arrange the development around that water feature. I had wanted to say, and hopefully, you know, as, as the project develops, the, the amenities around that water feature will be promoted. I mean, there wasn't any, that's, that's a level of detail you wouldn't see. But I could see where there would be an attempt, again, to create a gathering, opportunities for gathering in that central open space with the water as the central feature. It's set up to function that way, and I suspect it will. But yeah, if water, you know, the, our water flood control can be used as an amenity and not simply, well, this, this looks like an engineered water detention basin, but, but it doesn't really, you know, contribute anything to the quality of the, of the development.
I agree, because right now, they're designed just to be mowed with turf grass, but they always end up with invasive species of weeds and saplings, and then they become overgrown, then eventually, when it's really overgrown, somebody goes in there and just sort of clearcuts it. But it's really a missed opportunity, because why can't that all be, and I know the primary purpose is water detention, but what a great opportunity for some habitat, for some pollinators and various other things. It's just sort of a, one of the things maybe we should think about and recommend about, to just not let it all go to turf grass and maybe something else.
We talk about it a lot, it seems like.
But we don't have any teeth.
Right.
It is, it is an irony to me, you know, coming from the West Coast in California, and water is scarce there. I mean, one, one thing that drew me to the Midwest was, there's water all year round. You know, it may be snow, it may be ice, it may be rainfall, but it's a, it's a, there's a lot of precipitation all year round here, so it's very green typically. California dries out, it's, it's a semi desert, and it feels dry, you know. Here, it's, feels lush, almost sometimes too lush, if, you know, you don't get the mowers out there. But it's very green, you know, it's sort of, it goes through this transformation here of, you know, the death of winter, the dead of winter to, you know, tropical paradise. And it's, it's, it's astonishing transformation. And, and water is an important part of that, so if, if there's ways of trying to capture it, but develop it in, in a way which is pleasing, and, and as we're saying, adds to the biodiversity of the site, then you're really talking, and it's not just simply that you're trying to mitigate the potential flooding downstream, you know, which, which is an issue. Better, better to retain all these sources of water that may be coming to the Iowa River before they arrive, so we don't have flooding on, on our major rivers and streams. But how can we incorporate them in our property developments so that they're an amenity and not just, well, we have to deal with the stormwater now, what are we going to do? ADA is often the same issue, you know, you sort of, it's an afterthought. How do you, how do you incorporate access? Oh, right, I can, you know, so you, we, you add something at the end of the project and it hasn't been deeply integrated into the site plan?
Well, starting with the concept of disability first.
Yeah, just right from the get go, how can we, it should be invisible. It should be so well integrated into the design that you don't even notice it as ADA access. In fact, maybe it's sort of this other interesting way of experiencing the circulation on the site. There's some wonderful opportunities with ramps and so forth that, you know, can be, if they're incorporated well, are more than just simply providing accessibility, it's sort of choreographing movement in an interesting way. So, yeah, a lot of these things that we sort of view as, you know, burdening in the process actually can enhance the project if, if they're viewed in, you know, a different way. But, yeah, mobility, Ann mentioned mobility. That has, you know, that, mobility and land use are correlated, really. And unfortunately, you know, we don't have, I, I, I did, when I was on P and Z, asked if we could include. we could include transportation under the mission of, of planning and zoning, because of the fact that our, our transportation systems, our mobility networks, and our land uses need to be understood as two sides of the same coin. If you, if you want density, you've got to figure out alternatives to the automobile, because if you build up that density and everyone's still in their car, you've got a nightmare. You, you have to somehow create that alternative with the high density, because otherwise, the cars are gonna crowd out what little space you have left. So, so the things have to work in, in, you know, unison. And, you know, great, great to build density, but, you know, at the same time, let's make sure our bicycle networks are in place, our, our pedestrian networks are well-functioning, we have good transit service. You can't have good transit service without higher density. That's, you know, most of Iowa City is not designed for transit. The densities aren't high enough. You know, you need my readings, you know, roughly twenty units per acre to make transit work. And we have a lot of RS five zoning. So it works well as a commuting system, but in terms of everyday use, or creating little neighborhood commercial pockets, you know, where you could walk to the places like Deluxe, you know. Everyone wants a little, you know, cluster of neighborhood-serving retail like that. You, you have to have density to serve it, you know, at a, at a scale that's walkable. And it's tough to do if you have, you know, RS five densities. That's, you know, the alternative, and what I've tried to, you know, how do I, how do I resolve that? Well, I, I've tried to resolve it by saying, if we have good bicycle networks, even in RS five zones, you can, you can access a lot in Iowa City by bicycle if you have good bicycle networks, but not everyone can bike.
And we have winters.
Pardon me?
We have very hard winters.
Yeah, well, you know what's, what's interesting is some of the highest bike use is in the Nordic countries.
Yeah.
Probably the most bike-friendly city in the world is in, you know, the Arctic Circle of Finland.
But they have the infrastructure.
They, they are committed, they are committed to maintaining that infrastructure.
Right.
And they, they committed in part because they understand, we can't do these higher densities unless we have these alternative networks. So, they, they get on, you know, when they, when they have a snow event, they get on their bicycle networks, you know, it's not, not at the end of the whole snow removal process, it's coincident with snow removal for the vehicles. So that, you know, it's, it's just a matter of, are you gonna make it a priority or not? And unfortunately, it's, that's a, it seems to me a chicken and an egg problem, you know, if you don't, I know we're promoting bicycling, and it's another one for me, an observational thing, I'm, I'm, you know, I had high expectations that as we expanded the network, we'd see more people on bicycles. And I'm not sure I'm seeing them, at least as I go around town. I don't know if it's, that the on-street systems are, are not, you know, bicyclists don't feel safe using them. Maybe I'm just missing the data, and they actually are using them, but the trail system here is incredible, but the on-street network concerns me. So, I mean, on a number of these things, I just, I, I'm trying to think of these, these issues in terms of feedback. We, we make decisions, whether it's zoning, transportation policy, what have you, I think it's important to revisit our, our decisions and see how well they turned out, and do we need to make changes? It's sort of, you know, an ecological principle. Make, make your feedback loops as, you know, in a timely fashion. Don't let things lag, because what I've learned in, in my work, when I was working as a landscape architect, every, every decision I made was, was in effect an hypothesis as to how, how that park was going to work. And in a way, I think it's the same with zoning, planning and zoning, you know, it's a hypothesis. We think it's gonna work, it's consistent with the comp plan, probably will work, but I think we need to verify these things. Because as I said, south of Burlington, someone thought that was gonna work.
Yeah, it, it's very difficult, I'm really glad you brought that up, because on the whole quality improvement, if you're doing that plan-do-check-act circle in land use, how long do you wait before you act? You know, you're checking, you're checking, you're checking, but how long do you wait and then say, it's not working, we gotta do something else? I think that's the difficult question. Is it three years, ten years? I, I don't know.
I thought with the BikeNet, you know, we did the BikeMaster plan five years ago. I thought, maybe it's time to, to see how we're doing, you know, what, what, what parts of the system are working well, what parts aren't? What, what, what might we have learned or can learn from other countries that are pursuing bicycle networks? Because in my observation is that in the last ten years, it's one of the areas that things have really changed in terms of understanding how you design a bicycle network. Standards are just in constant flux. So, you know, we have, our lanes on the street are defined by paint on the ground. For a while, it was, well, the new standard is protected bike lanes, there has to be some vertical element defining that bike lane for the user to feel safe, at least on major streets. Then there was an acknowledgement that maybe that even, isn't even enough. You, you need to actually separate those lanes from the traffic in some fashion, so there isn't any potential of, as you would on a bike lane in Iowa City, have a car stray into the bike lane. Or if they did, there would be some barrier between, began, if they began to do that, there would be a barrier that would restrain them. So it's a constant, the, what we think to be the answer may not be the answer. That I, maybe, I don't know how long you, you want to continue talking, but this, this is another aspect of what we're dealing with in terms of land use and transportation, is in the last ten years, things have changed a lot. And so what we thought was the truth ten years ago has been reevaluated.
Well, I think it's a nice thing that, that council members are, I assume, other than you, maybe other people are doing other boards and commissions?
Yeah, Andrew was supposed to come tonight, and he's in.
So, I appreciate that, and it's, it's been, I think that we'll carry something on and have conversation, but I'm ready to go on to the next thing, if everybody else is.
I really appreciate this opportunity, John. That was very kind of you to come and do this, and it was good to hear your opinions, and I think you've got us, our creative juices flowing to put this on the future agenda and see what we can come up with and.
Well, thank you. As, I think, most of you know, I, you know, I'm not gonna be running for a third term, so I am kind of in a reflective, you know, what, what have I learned through this whole process? And, you know, this, I, I hope you, you don't feel like I've been trying to persuade you of my observations, but I did want to share some of the experiences I've had, and I'd, you know, be happy if any of you would like to get together and talk about affordable housing further, you know, I'd be happy to do that.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it very much.
I do want to say that I did enjoy the way whoever put this together did it, because it wasn't like having just words. Everything was mapped out, it didn't take a lot, lot of time to get through it, and I actually, I think I got more out of it with it being done this way.
I think it's a, it's a, it's a nice, pithy little document, well organized.
So when we talk about it out, we'll, we'll do that.
Very good. All right. Thank you very much. I will go on to item number five, presentation and discussion of the 2022 Iowa City residential development analysis. Ann?
Thank you, Ann Russit with Neighborhood and Development Services. This is an annual analysis that staff puts together of residential development within Iowa City. So this is for the year 2022. As the chair alluded to, it's not really good news, but we'll, we'll get into that. So what we're, what we really.
It was kind of frightening, actually.
And, and, you know, piggybacking on the conversation about housing affordability, this impacts housing affordability in Iowa City for sure. So what we looked at was residential subdivision data, building permit data, really to track short and long-term development pander, patterns, and this is really an important part of planning and making sure that we can accommodate the growth and the population projections that we anticipate and the housing needs that we have in the city. So, final plats, we looked at final plats. I know the commission doesn't view final plats, but it's the next step after preliminary plat, so once council approves a final plat, it's really creating those lots for new development. So we looked at final plats, building permits, and then we were really looking at single-family, duplex, and multifamily developments. Some of the takeaways is that 2022 continued the trend of low levels of residential lot creation. The number of dwelling units permitted through the building permit process did increase slightly from 2021, but the city is still seeing fewer units permitted than before the pandemic. And permit activity continues to outpace the creation of new lots, so we're seeing a diminishing supply of residential lots in the city. If residential growth continues at this pace, the city will only be able to accommodate less than sixty-three hundred new residents by 2030, when the growth projection is over ten thousand. And redevelopment can provide some additional housing, but the city is still on track to experience unmet demand and deplete its supply of all vacant lots. So, so let's look at final plat activity. This chart that you see here are the anticipated dwelling units, based on lots that have been platted for 2022. And then you can see the ten-year average and the thirty-year average. In 2022, only two residential final plats were approved. That included eighteen single-family lots, which is part of Sand Hill Estates, which is south of Wetherby Park, and the one lot that was created for the senior, senior housing facility over by Hickory Hill Park. So that can accommodate a hundred, about a hundred and fifty-eight units, but that's considering that one lot for Hickory Trails as units when it's actually just beds. So it's, it's not technically new units, but it does help, it does help address some of our residential needs.
Without that, how would this look?
Yeah, yeah, I know. So this was the fewest single-family platted lot since nineteen ninety. Again, it was only eighteen. There were zero duplex lots created, so you can see kind of compared to the ten-year average for single-family is a hundred and twenty-eight lots, and we only had eighteen last year. The thirty-year average is a hundred and thirty-three, and we only had eighteen. So lot creation tends to occur in cycles, so we're kind of, we're in a down, downturn, right? So hopefully, it, it goes back up. We can look at some of these charts that show the, the number of lots platted over a period of time. This is from twenty twelve, or twenty twelve to twenty twenty-two. You get a better sense of kind of that roller coaster that we're seeing in terms of lot creation from this chart, which goes back to nineteen ninety. So you can kind of see that there was a peak in nineteen ninety-nine, two thousand and three, and then more recently in twenty fifteen, but since twenty fifteen, it's kind of, it's gone, gone down. And obviously, there was a downturn during the Great Recession around two thousand and eight and after that. Looking at building permit activity, again, this chart shows dwelling units based on building permits issued. So in twenty twenty-two, for single-family, there were ninety-five permits issued, two duplexes, and then two hundred and sixty-six multifamily units. And you can see, again, that compared to the ten-year and thirty-year averages, it's below. It was an uptick from twenty twenty-one, though. We had fewer issue, building permits issued in twenty twenty-one. Duplexes, that's harder to track, the, it's not as, it's not as steady, but there, because there's more variation with duplex units, but it is lower than our long-term averages. In terms of multifamily, there was, twenty twenty-two is an increase from twenty twenty-one, but it's lower than our longer-term averages. And I guess the other thing, this, these two hundred and sixty-six units, two hundred and forty-nine of those units are from one project in, in twenty twenty-two. So here's some charts that kind of show the longer-term data going back. This is from twenty twelve, so you can see how it fluctuates, and then going back to nineteen ninety, you can see, there was a big spike in, in twenty sixteen, and that kind of corresponds with the spike we saw in lots created in twenty, twenty fifteen. And also with the Riverfront Crossings master plan being developed and implemented, there was, we did see kind of an uptick in development activity after that, but since that time, it's, it's trended down. So looking, the next thing we looked at was vacant lots. So vacant lot, single-family and duplex all across the city to see development potential, and we looked at whether or not those lots have infrastructure, the infrastructure needed to, to build on, or if, if infrastructure was not provided yet. And so what we're seeing is the single-family and duplex lot supply has decreased over time. Units permitted exceed the, the new lots that are created since at least nineteen ninety. Based on the trends from twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one, this supply of lots will last two years for single-family, and that's down from two-point-seven years in twenty twenty-one, and two-point-four years for duplex units. Unlike the analysis we did in twenty twenty-one, the twenty twenty-two analysis is more comprehensive and includes all of the vacant lots in Iowa City, so this indicates a deficit in single-family and duplex lot supply being larger than we had thought it was last year. Looking at vacant multifamily lots, multifamily units permitted exceeded the lots created since nineteen ninety, unlike single-family and duplex, though, that's not necessarily a, a really bad indicator, because a lot of multifamily development doesn't rely on new lots created, it's redevelopment, it's infill, unlike single-family and duplex. But based on twenty twelve to twenty twenty-one development trends, this supply of lots will last one-point-eight years for multifamily units, and redevelopment of existing lots, again, would extend that timeline. There's still capacity for additional units on partially-developed lots that weren't included in this count, so we didn't look at vacant, we looked at vacant, but we didn't look at underutilized sites or sites that are, could potentially see some redevelopment in the near future. So looking forward, the Metropolitan Planning Organization of Johnson County projects a demand for over ten thousand new residents in Iowa City by twenty thirty, and, and based on these development trends, Iowa City will fall, fall short of the housing needs and the development that we need to accommodate those new residents. If twenty, just twenty-six hundred new residents would be accommodated if all vacant and residential lots were developed. Thirty-one hundred new residents would be accommodated based on average annual lot creation trends. So if that trend continues, we'd be able to house another thirty-one hundred residents, not the ten thousand that we expect. Sixty-two hundred new, almost sixty-three hundred new residents would be accommodated based on the average annual building permit trends from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-two. So to meet that last scenario, the most optimistic, which is around twenty-three hundred new residents, all currently platted vacant lots would need to be built on, including those that don't currently have infrastructure. An additional six hundred and eighty-nine single-family, thirty duplex, and nine hundred and thirty-five multifamily units would need to be platted over the next seven years. And this would still only accommodate sixty-one percent of the projected growth that is anticipated in Iowa City. And then it, we have some kind of scenarios on, to meet the full demand of that ten thousand, ten thousand new units, what would need to happen? So again, I think I touched on these in the beginning, but these are the key trends. Continued low levels of residential lot creation, permit activity continues to outpace the creation of new lots, so we're, we're losing our lot supply, we need more lots to be created. Despite this, the number of dwelling units developed has increased over the past thirty years, primarily due to multifamily redevelopment. redevelopment, primarily in Riverfront Crossings, which does not depend as heavily on the creation of new lots. If residential growth continues at this pace, the city will only be able to accommodate less than 6,300 new residents by 2030. And while redevelopment provides additional housing, the city is on track to experience unmet demand and deplete its supply of vacant lots. So what are, what are the implications of this? Housing, back to housing affordability. What we talked about a few meetings ago, we talked about supply, housing supply isn't not the only factor, and that doesn't, isn't the only thing that impacts housing affordability, but it is a major factor. We need more housing. The lack of supply can lead to increased competition for a limited supply of residential lots, and housing, the cost of housing goes up. There's also environmental impacts. If we can't accommodate our growth within the city, it has to go somewhere. It could go to Tiffin or North Liberty, further away from more employment centers, which is going to, you know, increase car dependence and traffic congestion. So staff thinks it's really important to continue encouraging residential growth in the areas where it's appropriate, infill locations with access to city services, and within those areas that are designated growth areas that we anticipate will, at some point, be annexed and become part of the city. So that's, that concludes my presentation. I can try to answer any questions. I actually didn't do this analysis. Kirk did. He's not here tonight, though.
I saw him walk by.
He was at another meeting.
Yeah. I think this is very sobering. I think it presents some challenges to us because it seems pretty clear to me that this will put increased stress on affordability. I just don't see any way around that. And the other thing is, these people will move somewhere. They're, they're leaving the small counties. Our conversation we had before the meeting started about how most counties in Iowa are shrinking. Those people are moving to the urban areas, including Iowa City, or one of the faster-growing urban areas. And if they can't live in Iowa City where they're working, so they work at UIC or UI or someplace else, then they'll live in a surrounding area, which means they're driving to work. So now we're, we're hurting our environmental goals, and we, we're not addressing affordability because we're not dealing with, with one of the things we actually have some control over, which is volume, creating opportunity for more structures to get built for people to live in. So it's just the challenge I think we have to face very soberly, that is there anything we're doing that is discouraging housing and housing opportunities? And because those houses are getting built, they're just not getting built in Iowa City. And there's probably reasons for that. And what can we do to change that? So people actually can live where they work, in the community they work in. So that's just my little sharing thoughts. So.
Well, I would expect, I mean, one of my questions was going to be that housing construction is down everywhere because it costs so much more since 2020. I mean, 2020 shut everything down. And when it started to open back up again, inflation and lack of personnel to build a house, you know, combined to make it harder to get it done. So, I mean, when you say, it's not like, I mean, I agree that the people are choosing to live maybe, and maybe more housing is being built in North Liberty and Tiffin, but I bet they're not happy with the number of houses they've had built in the last two years either. It is, it is a cycle, and we're in the bottom of it. But it's like, how do we get out of it?
I agree. I mean, we can't control the financial end of it, the, how people finance their new construction or their homes. But we need to make sure we're not putting up any roadblocks and actually find ways to encourage people because we really, there's something wrong with this society when you can't live in the community you're working in. That's a real, there's a red flag being waved there. And so the people that are in service positions at the university or the hotels or whatever, that can't live in Iowa City, we need to look at that. And there's an affordability problem, and that's only going to get worse. And I don't pretend to have an answer here. But we'll never find an answer if we just don't keep struggling with the question.
Yeah. And I think I mentioned before, there is a town in Colorado, which is a really good example because it's in the mountains, and it's, the housing is very expensive. So people that have houses there goes to the mountain to ski. But then the coffee shops cannot hire anybody because service people cannot live there. So that, that could be also a problem for us because like Hy-Vee will have less, probably less applications. If people cannot live here, they will choose, sometimes they won't have to, they won't choose to travel here to work. They might choose somewhere else to live and work. And the other thing that I heard the city manager talk about in the last city council meeting was that, I think he said three quarters of our revenue comes from residential taxes. So that's also a big, a huge problem for the city that we need to consider.
Glad you brought that up. I know we're never supposed to consider that when we're talking about approving a rezoning or anything. But the fact is, the city is financed by property taxes. So it's always sort of in the back of my mind. So I've actually let that leak out a few times. Because to have a healthy, vibrant city, we have to have the financial resources to provide that healthy, vibrant city.
And do we ever, like in this comparison, do we ever benchmark compared to like neighboring communities?
You know, that's a good question. I was, I don't know what the numbers look like for other jurisdictions, but I would agree with what Susan said. They're probably seeing fewer units and housing come online as well. But I just don't know how it compares to us.
Yeah, because I mean, just, I guess, driving around and being interested in construction, it feels like the growth is maybe a little bit outside Iowa City, kind of that fringe area. Also, kind of by Liberty High School, you see a lot of development up there, which kind of falls outside the Iowa City jurisdiction. And so it seems like for recently, I mean, we're all facing, or construction industries facing increased labor costs, lack of, a lack of people to do it, skilled trades, and increased land cost, increased materials cost. So it's a lot of headwinds on that end. But also, I think, you know, on our part, on what we can control is, you know, continue to be like a good partner in that project, pushing it forward. I think sometimes we may get caught up in some of the, the perfect project versus kind of what fits the area.
And there is, you know, I'm, I live on the east side of town, and so I, you know, most of my shopping in errands and places I go are on the east side of town. But, you know, we, we just approved a considerable housing development on the corner of Scott and Rochester. I mean, my memory is 50, 60 houses, plants, lots, and then the senior living thing besides that. So how long does it, and then there's development still going on out American Legion Road. Houses are still being built out there.
That's in the county, isn't it?
Well, there is community view on American Legion Road, which is in the city. So some of those vacant lots that were in the analysis are in community view.
Yeah.
But they have infrastructure.
Right, right. I mean, so for example, take the, the Scott and Rochester. I mean, what, it takes a year to get the infrastructure in?
Yeah, that, that was, that final plat was approved last month, maybe? So yeah, they, they'll start putting infrastructure in and.
But, I mean, there, but so that's platted here in 2023. So there's something we get to count.
Yeah.
Yeah. When you do it next year. But, but no one will probably be building a dwelling there for a year.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a while.
Yeah, yeah. Because they have to do all the infrastructure, streets, sewers, everything.
Mm-hmm. But we do have a site plan that we're reviewing for that senior living facility. So that may come online sooner, as long as they can provide, you know, the street and what they need to, to make it safe to get in and out.
Where do you see the growth? I mean, I've been sort of anxious to see something in the, the areas that we changed the form-based code. And it's like, I'm excited, and I just want to go find somebody with, who wants to develop some of that land and do something cool with it.
We should be considering.
You're not alone.
So, but no, nothing in the pipeline yet that you know of?
No.
And that's another place where there is a development is off of Gilbert on the way, the new housing development on your left as you drive to Terry Trueblood?
Yeah, Cherry Creek. Yeah. That's near your house, I think.
And actually, it's, it's turning out to me almost to be, and it started off pretty rough, if people remember, you know, when he cut down a bunch of trees before he got permission to do so. It's kind of turning out, though, if it keeps continuing, like really an ideal development that you'll want to see. Multifamily.
Right.
Single-family, townhouses, nice little layout. Just keep our fingers crossed. It's really looking good.
So nothing in the pipeline for the form-based code areas?
No, unfortunately, no.
Do we, I mean, you probably know who owns all that land.
Well, Navigate Homes owns a lot of the land south of Wetherby Park. And we've had conversations with them. And I think that at some point, they're going to move forward, but they're working on, they're, you know, building homes out on Camp Cardinal Boulevard right now. And so they're.
Yeah, the, the personnel. I mean, you can't, can't find people to do the work.
Right. And they also were involved in the new self-storage facility in the South District in Pepperwood Plaza. So that was a project that they wanted to move forward with the retail and restaurant space where Royce and Porter's new restaurants. So they were involved in that, too. So yeah, just, just other things going on. But we, staff really hopes, we would love to see something happen down there. Or out on Rarit.
Yeah.
Is this going to take a while to get, when do they project that the, the city services will be ran under 218?
Yeah, that's soon. I think that construction is planned for this year. Yeah.
I think this would be good information for whoever comes in lieu of Mark, like good information to know this slide.
Oh, for the new commissioner?
For the new commissioner, yeah.
Yep.
I also have to say, I, this is very eye-opening, and it's very scary. But I am hopeful because I think COVID was like a big, had a big impact in everyone in all the communities. But I think that by 2030, we'll be recovered and maybe building again.
I hope so.
Did you say 2030?
Yeah.
Hope it's a lot faster than that.
I hope we don't have to wait that long.
Any other questions for Ann on this presentation?
Well, by the chart, it looked like about every 11 years. So 2026 might be a big year coming up.
That sounds way better than 2030.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Optimus. That's very good. Anyway, thank you. Ann, this is very helpful. I, I hope this gets wide dispersment for people to read this. I think it's very informative.
The Planning and Zoning Commission could like stand out on the street corner by a cornfield and say, build here, build here.
Well, and then we can't hold up the zoning, you know, we can't.
It doesn't look good, so we're not going to prove it.
All right. Thank you very, very much, everybody. Item number six, consideration of meeting minutes for April 5, 2023. Is there a motion for approval if there's no major additions or corrections?
I think we did them already.
I, I've made a couple of changes based on some input. The wrong people, the wrong commissioners were identified for the.
Move of approval.
Motion by Craig, second by Townsend. Discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion is approved 6-0. Number seven, planning and zoning information. Ann?
A few items. It was a busy night at council. Speaking of new lots that we want to be created, the Riverfront West final plat was approved, the Western Homes preliminary plat out by St. Andrew Church was approved, and the Melrose Commercial Park subdivision out on Melrose was approved, the vacation of Grand Avenue Court was approved. And you were all at the, or almost all of you were at the consult last night. The council did approve the first reading of that rezoning on Dane Mormon Trek.
With that?
Two more readings, though.
Did it have conditions with it? They were doing?
It, it did not end up with any additional conditions.
It's, it's very difficult to add conditions if you don't know the project. And, you know, they don't have to submit a project when they ask for rezoning. So that's the difficulty over the conversation we just had, which I didn't participate in because I didn't think there's any point. But, I mean, you can't require people to give a concept plan. You know, they can just ask for rezoning, and then they're not held to it anyway.
And, and I don't blame them because it's just more to fight about. I mean.
Well, because, you know.
Yes, the zoning is fine, but I don't like that project.
Yeah. And I don't think it's, it would be like a smart way of planning a city, like going project by project or pinpointing, like, I, I don't know. I think it's code basis.
Just so everyone knows, I just asked Dan if on the next agenda, we can make sure that we put on election of a vice chair, because I know I'm going to be gone in June. I have, the last two weeks of May, I'll be in Colorado. In the first two weeks of June, I'll be in Alaska. So somebody's going to have to run a meeting. So just want to make sure we get that on the, as much as I love each and every person on this, I'm afraid I won't be doing that. So anybody, anybody else want to add anything on PNC information?
Just that in the packet, there, Mark's vacancy was listed there as accepting applications. But they're also accepting applications for the two vacancies that are up July 1, which is Billy's and Chad's. And so we're going to need new people. I mean, I assume that if Chad's interested and his applies, he'll be reappointed, since he hasn't been here very long. But I don't know how, have you had two terms, Billy?
One.
One. So you could.
How's that work? I forget. Do, do you just remind them to reapply, or they just need to do it when they see the notice?
Yeah, but I did not see it for Chad and Billy, so I can send you guys an email with the information.
Yeah.
Because we'd sure like to see both of you.
Yeah, really.
I think I'm too old. The things they're currently accepting applications.
Okay. I thought it was just Mark's. So, okay.
Yes. I think you defy anything.
Because I was looking to see if Mark's was there, and I saw theirs. I thought, whoa, it's April. They work so far ahead nowadays. You gotta be on top of things.
I kind of thought Ann was just trying to tell me something.
And on the, the secondary terms, I would hope it would just be pro forma, and you guys get reappointed. But that's not always happened in the past. And so I just want everybody to know that. And I don't know, there's a rhyme or reason to it. Maybe Ann has a secret code she gives them for a yea or nay. I don't know.
It's all, it's all city council. We don't even really, we see the applications, but we have no input.
I'll just.
And I do think it's good, you know, as a, a person who doesn't have that background, I'm very appreciative of the Realtor background. And that we, when I joined, we had Phoebe and Mark. And they have some, a different, a good knowledge base of communities and what's going on and issues. And, you know, if I was going to recruit somebody to apply, it would be a Realtor.
I agree. They're very helpful with their knowledge.
Maybe you can tell, you know, you can tell the council that that's what you think, and they will consider it. I know they look at when reappointing people that has already been on a, on a commission, they look at absent, absenties, absences. That's one thing that they look at.
Well, I think because of state gender balance laws, I think Mark has. Well, I think because of state gender balance laws, I think Mark has to be replaced with a male, I believe.
Did they get rid of that law? Or did they didn't?
No.
Okay.
Anything else on P&amp;Z information? Seeing none. Item number eight, adjournment. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Townsend, second by Elliott. Discussion? Hearing no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion passed 6-0, and we're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody. I appreciate it.